I'm the former forum moderator Jackie Wells. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Golden Valley and live in Golden Valley, so none of these candidates are on my absentee ballot. This part of our forum will last until about 1:25. Now, we have two wards. So, the candidates in Ward 1 are Charles Austensen and Tyler Klein. The candidates in Ward 2 are Jason Greenberg and Sheila Webb. We have asked them each for an opening statement telling you why they would like to serve as a member of the Robinsdale City Council and the qualifications and experiences each has for this position. Candidates, right in front of you is a timer who will notify you at 1 minute, at 30 seconds, and when your time is up. You may finish your sentence after the stop sign. So, we will begin with Ward 1, Charles Austensen. Would you please present your opening statement of up to 3 minutes?
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me here and for conducting this forum. My name's Charles Austensen. I'm running for city council in Ward 1, Robinsdale, as a nonpartisan candidate. I'm focusing on 3 issues: a bike and pedestrian-friendly Robinsdale, continuing our great work in downtown, and creating better police-community relations. I'm a born and raised Robinsdale resident. I've been here for 35 years. I took a little bit of leave of absence for graduate school and college, but I live currently with my brother John Austensen. He's a schoolteacher in Robinsdale, and we own a twin home behind our alma mater, Lakeview Elementary School. I'm a graduate of Robinsdale Armstrong High School and currently work as an attorney in a small firm in Bloomington doing business law. My main priorities are, for bike and pedestrian friendliness, I want to create an overpass over County Road 81, so our seniors, our disabled neighbors, our children can safely access everything that Robinsdale has to provide. When I was a boy, I couldn't ride my bike across 81. It was too dangerous, and I think we need to make that change. Number 2, speed limits in Robinsdale, I think, need to be looked at, particularly on Lake Drive, near where I live. 35 miles an hour on a residential road passing a school is simply too fast, and I think that we need to take steps to remedy that, as well as West Broadway. West Broadway, I believe, could be reduced maybe to 25 miles an hour if we're going to have that commerce feel, and I would extend that all the way out to Crystal, so there's some residents there, and into Grazer Park. For downtown, let's continue the great work we're doing. I think the previous council is doing a wonderful job in that. I would continue with that. But I also want to extend things out to Grazer Park. I think that has been neglected by the city, not out of intent, but just because of funding or whatever, but I think it's time that we revisit that. That's always been, when I was growing up, a place for cops to hang out and give speeding tickets. I think it should be utilized by the city and by the residents. Finally, police-community relations is a huge issue, as we all know. I would like to see more police engagement with the community. There is a statute outside of Robinsdale Police Department showing a police officer holding the hand of a little boy. And when I was a boy at Robinsdale growing up, the police officers used to hand out Vikings' football cards, so there was an effort to go out and engage the community. Today, I don't see that. Again, I've lived here for a long time. I don't see that. There's sort of, for lack of a better word, icy relationship between Robinsdale residents and the police department. What I would propose would be, as a job duty, require every single officer to take 4 hours out of his or her shift every month and make themselves available in our communities at our convenience, to talk to us, to listen to us, to engage with us, and to be friendly. And so, we get to know these people on a first-name basis, and I think it would make for a better Robinsdale. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Klein, would you please present your opening statement of up to 3 minutes?
Thank you. To those watching at home live or, you know, recording later, my name is Tyler Klein. I'm a candidate for Robinsdale City Council, Ward 1. As a first-time candidate, I think it's important that I kind of give you some background about who I am. I grew up in this area of Robinsdale. I attended school in the 281 district. I studied at both Forest and Hosterman Middle School before graduating from Brooklyn Center High School. At the time, I didn't like the idea of changing school districts, but I met my wife Maggie at Brooklyn Center, so my mom moving during high school was one of the best things that ever happened to me. After high school, I spent roughly 8 years working as a general manager of Robinsdale's Mobile Lock &amp; Safe. After a time, I decided to go back to school. I graduated from North Hennepin Community College, and later, I attended the University of Minnesota, where I graduated with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science. Following my time at the U of M, I went to work at the Minnesota Senate, working as a legislative assistant to Senator Ann Rest, who represents Robinsdale. I have also always had at least one part-time job to, you know, help supplement things in the service industry. For many years, I worked at Frankie's Pizza in New Hope, and I currently work at TGI Fridays in St. Louis Park. If elected, I will bring my hard-working, service-focused background to City Hall. My wife Maggie, who's a special education resource teacher with the Minneapolis School District, and I, we share our Ward 1 rental home with our 5-year-old son Jackson. He has recently started kindergarten at C Elementary in the Robinsdale School District. One of my duties at the Senate is to meet with community members in different lobby organizations about issues that they see in the community. When people ask me my favorite part of the job, I always tell them getting to meet and talk with people. I can only see issues through my own eyes, so when I get to hear others, the best way to see the entire picture is listening to them. The only way that we can make Robinsdale a city we're all proud to call home is if all of our community is part of the conversation. My campaign has been endorsed by the SD45 DFL, the Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation, AFL-CIO, the IBW Local 292, the Minneapolis Area Realtors, State Senator Ann Rest, Hennepin County District 1 Commissioner Candidate Davana Pittman, and current Ward 1 Counselor and mayoral candidate Bill Blonigan. It's a great honor to have the support of all these organizations and community leaders, but more importantly, I'm asking for your support in Ward 1 and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from the Ward 2 candidates. Jason Greenberg, would you please present your opening statement of up to 3 minutes?
Hi. Thanks to the League of Women Voters and CCX for hosting this forum. My name is Jason Greenberg, and I'm a candidate for Robinsdale City Council, Ward 2. My wife and I have lived here for 13 years. We're raising our 2 daughters here. We have an extraordinary circle of Robinsdale friends and are part of an amazing community of neighbors and businesses. As a member of the Planning Commission, I have listened to residents, lawyers, developers, business owners, and others make requests or speak about issues that impact them directly. Along with the other members of the Commission, we have made recommendations to the city council about everything from a new fence to a comprehensive plan for our city. As a candidate, I have been to community meetings, knocked on doors, met with neighbors, and responded to emails. Through that process, I've had the pleasure of speaking with hundreds of residents. While my areas of focus are the same from the primary: community connections, balanced growth, and public health and safety, I've changed some of the details because of those conversations. Community connections means bringing our community closer together. Robinsdale is special because the neighbors know one another and take care of one another. We need to broaden our networks within Robinsdale so we are more connected. It also means hearing more from your city council member. I want to be accessible and responsive. My literature and website include my home address and phone number. I'm committed to listening to and informing residents about decisions that get made in Robinsdale. I support strong community schools, viewing our residential neighborhoods as an asset, and having more events for Robinsdale. All of this will strengthen our community. Balanced growth is about our people, businesses, and city government. I support continued expansion of our independent businesses in Robinsdale. I think it's important to keep the unique feel of our downtown district while expanding the overall corridor. We need to keep our iconic water tower. We must be smart about programs and efficient in how we use our resources. As a city where property taxes make up almost 2/3 of our revenue, we must continue to carefully consider budgets. As we increase density, we need to pay attention to how it impacts our infrastructure. By taking a balanced approach to growth, I'll make sure we do what's best for our city. With regards to public safety, I want to ensure Robinsdale is equitable for all of our residents and visitors. I have creative ideas to address speeding and traffic hazards. I believe it's important our public safety officials continue to receive training and also find ways to engage with the community. For public health, I support keeping our lakes as great outdoor resources for our community. We need to consider how growth impacts our lakes and environment. As we improve parks around the city, they should be more inclusive. We must continue supporting Robinsdale as a walkable city. I care about Robinsdale, and I'm very much looking forward to this conversation.
Thank you very much. Sheila Webb, would you please present your opening statement of up to 3 minutes?
Yes, I'm Sheila Webb. I'm running for city council in Ward 2. I am a wife, mother, and grandmother. My husband and I have lived in Robinsdale for 6 years. I'm a social worker by trade. I've been in the field of social services for over 24 years. I have worked with families, children, and individuals on a plethora of issues or concerns around child protection, homelessness, chemical dependency, mental health, and now I'm a proud social worker in education in an elementary school. I thought it was very interesting to hear both mayoral candidates talk about diversity and talking about needing people of color to be in the community, talking about on the police force and in city employment, but failed to talk about having that representation on the city council. I think it's important that there's diversity in every area in Robinsdale. I am strictly for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Diversity is about our individual differences, what makes us unique, the gift we bring to our communities, our culture, our surroundings. Equity is about making sure that there's accessibility and opportunity for people. And inclusion is about making sure that people feel supported and valued, that people actually feel welcomed, and we're just not using the term "all are welcome." We're holding that as a moral value. I would love for the city of Robinsdale, Ward 2 residents, to see me as a person who's going to push the voices of the people. I believe in diversity, I believe in equity, and I believe in inclusion, and I believe that Robinsdale can set the standard as a city that has moral values around that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I will ask questions that were sent in by voters to the League's email or telephone for all of you, and we're going to take turns flip-flopping back and forth. And so, anyway, we asked you to give us 1-minute responses, and we will begin with Ward 2 candidate Sheila Webb. And our first question is, "Robinsdale could face significant financial constraints in 2021. What would you identify as your top 2 budget priorities for the next 4 years?" Please explain.
Top 2 budget. Can you repeat that question?
Uh-huh, yes. "Robinsdale could face significant financial constraints in 2021. What would you identify as your top 2 budget priorities for the next 4 years?"
One of the priorities for me as a city council member would be forming partnerships. It's been brought to my attention that we have a restricted budget, and I think the only way you can form or expand on your budget, if it's small, is to form partnerships. I also think that we should look into infrastructure. We should also look into how we're spending money around redevelopment, how we're supporting current businesses. I want the budget to include things that currently exist that need support. Development, I'm all for redevelopment, but I also think that we should be looking at our budget, and we should also be looking at our budget when we're talking about hiring police, having support for the police department, and looking at safety, issues around safety.
Thank you. Same question for Ward 2 candidate Jason Greenberg.
Yeah, as far as budget priorities, I think number 1 is the city government, and by that, I mean, both our public health and safety, as well as our city staff, that make sure that our finances are taken care of, that our parks and lakes are taken care of, that we have good programs. And so, basically, the infrastructure of what makes Robinsdale run as a city, so that would be number 1. And then, number 2, I think just our infrastructure projects in general around, you know, the water tower and how we're handling budgeting around that, and streets and redevelopment as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question for Ward 1 candidate Tyler Klein, please.
Yeah, I would say that it's not a likely, you know, budget downfall. There's going to be a lower budget here. You know, we need to look at how to do more with less. I think the number 1 priority for me is, you know, working with the different entities with light rail. We need light rail expansion to get, you know, people to and from work and around the community. I think that that is something we can do where we've already invested in it, so we can have great return on that investment without spending extra money currently. And then, I think it's just, you know, there's a large number of our population that's out of work right now. It's trying to be advocates for them getting back in the workforce as these, hopefully the pandemic winds down and we can get back to a different kind of normal.
Thank you. Ward 1 candidate Charles Austensen, please.
Thank you. So, the things that I've outlined that I want to do, obviously, are nice things. They're the fun things that cities do, and of course, I recognize that those aren't immediate, they're not immediately ascertainable. Those are long-term goals. In the short term, we do have a budget, not crisis, but we have some budget challenges. I would say the city should prioritize what the city does best, and that is to protect us and to keep our city safe and clean. I would not want to cut corners on things like snow plowing, on maintaining our roads, our infrastructure. That is the first and foremost goal of a city, is to allow people to go do the things that they do in life. And you require, we need safe streets, we need clean streets, we need repaired streets, and we need, and all those other things will fall into play, but that would be the number 1 priority. When you have a budget shortfall, it's kind of like a triage. You have to really figure out, okay, what do we really need to do and get that done well.
Thank you very much. All right. Ooh, we got through our first round. "In the past 2 years, Robinsdale has seen significant redevelopment, including the Hy-Vee grocery store and 2 market-rate apartment buildings. Would you please discuss the benefits and challenges that you see in these redevelopment projects, and how would you approach future redevelopment questions if elected?" And we start with Ward 2 candidate Jason Greenberg.
So, I think that the market-rate apartments and that development is great as far as supporting our downtown and the businesses in Robinsdale. So, having more people in Robinsdale and more density means that we can expand the corridor and have more people that are spending time in Robinsdale, buying from businesses in Robinsdale. From a challenges perspective, I think it's around infrastructure. I understand there's construction on France and 36, and so, some of that will change, but my approach is to be balanced and to make sure that we understand what the true impacts once people's travel behaviors get back to normal, to understand what those true impacts on our infrastructure will be.
Thank you. Same question for Ward 2 candidate Sheila Webb, please.
Can you repeat it, please?
I sure can. "In the past 2 years, Robinsdale has seen significant redevelopment, including the Hy-Vee grocery store and 2 new market-rate apartment buildings. Would you please discuss the benefits and challenges of such redevelopment projects, and how would you approach future redevelopment projects?"
I think the positives are that the developments could possibly increase our tax base. And increasing tax base, that makes it great for everyone in this city and Robinsdale, including Robinsdale Ward 2. I think some of the negatives are some of the things that people were against at the beginning of some of those projects. People were concerned about affordable housing. People were concerned about having Hy-Vee in that location. So, I just think some of the concerns, some of the negatives, would be the concern of the people, the people not being 100% for the redevelopment.
Thank you. Same question, please, to Ward 1 candidate Charles Austensen.
Thank you. I think the Hy-Vee development has been a blessing to the city of Robinsdale. I'm old enough to remember when this Terrace Theater was dormant, when the Rainbow Foods went dormant, and that entire block was, there wasn't much going on, that entire space. Recently, we all know that the Westfall Legion and the Vodka Bar and all that space, that was, again, an underutilized gem of Robinsdale for development, and I think it's been nothing but positive. I understand the concerns about development with respect to housing and affordable housing. I think we need to strike that balance, and I think when you have prime locations there, market housing down the street from our, I like, I'm proud to say, high-end restaurants and bars, I think is a great fit.
Thank you. Ward 1 candidate Tyler Klein, please.
Thank you. You know, I think back to my time at the locksmithing company on West Broadway, and I used to look out the front window, and, you know, the town has come a long way since then. It used to be kind of changing businesses, and I think that as we're, you know, things are building up, that it's a good thing for our community. We have options, and they have different options to live and shop, and that's a great thing. I would think a concern would be that, what do they say, you know, "A rising tide raises all ships," and we don't want to price out our affordable housing. We're, you know, very lucky that in Robinsdale, compared to some of our neighboring suburbs, that we just have a lot more affordable housing, and I'm, you know, I want to be cautious that we don't price out some of that where we can be affordable for our community.
Thank you. Let's see. Yep, we got everybody. Okay, good. New question. "What policies would you pursue, if any, relating to the Robinsdale Police Department and its community relations?" And we will start with Ward 1 candidate Tyler Klein, please.
You know, it's, we all have to recognize that we are all part of this community together, and we're going to have to interact with each other. I have a brother-in-law who's a sergeant with the St. Louis Park Cop, or a St. Louis Park sergeant with them, and I just, you know, I hear his side of things, the challenges they have, and then I hear from people in the community. I was at an event, I think it was last week, with the Human Rights Commission about hearing different people that have been profiled and don't feel safe in our own community, and we need to live and be a part of this together, so we need to find ways that, you know, we don't have an adversarial relationship. So, I think that it's just, you know, listening to people on both sides and trying to find ways to come together.
Thank you. Ward 1 candidate Charles Austensen, please.
Thank you. Think about every time you interact with a police officer. Most of the time, you're either a crime victim or you're an alleged criminal. In neither of those cases, it's a good thing, right? So, how can we interact with our police on a sort of non-policing method? And I outlined that in my intro. Envision this: every single, we have 4 wards in Robinsdale. Divide those wards into 2, 4, 6 subdivisions, and on every day in Robinsdale, on rotating days, there is a police officer or 2 coming for a period of 4 hours or so off-duty to engage with you on any issue. So, on the second Tuesday of the month at Redeemer Lutheran Church in Ward 1, there will be 2 officers present to field questions and to meet you, and I think that that is the way we get going where we actually have true police-community relations.
Thank you. Same question for Ward 2 candidate Sheila Webb, please.
Thank you. I think that it's important that the police department, looking forward to seeing who the new chief will be, collaborate with the Human Rights Commission. I think the Human Rights Commission represents a group of people who are looking out for the best interests of humanity, and I think that is the ideal collaboration to have, is to have the police department and the HRC work together to, in the best interest of the community in keeping people safe, not only keeping the community safe, but having people feel a sense of safety when they call their police department for support, and that they feel that police are actually there to protect and serve. And so, I think working diligently with an organization or commission already in place in Robinsdale would be ideal.
Thank you. Same question for Ward 2 candidate Jason Greenberg, please.
Okay, thank you. I think first it's worth pointing out that the city is currently looking into adding a shared mental health resource along with Hennepin County, Crystal, and New Hope, and I absolutely support that and think that's a great thing for our police and public safety. And then, beyond that, I think we need to do more community engagement with, around public safety and make sure that our police force is out and meeting with the community and, again, you know, speaking with them and having those conversations so we can actually get outside of, you know, only responding to enforcement calls or emergency calls or, you know, our annual meet and greet. So, I think those are 2 key ways to help that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. New question. "Please give an example of city programs or services, if any, which you would like to see changed, and what changes would you propose?" And we will start with Ward 1 candidate Charles Austensen, please.
Wow, that's a good question. I would like to see an effort by, not necessarily the city, but perhaps Chamber of Commerce can get into this. I'd like to see, I'd like to know where the minority-owned businesses are in Robinsdale and see if there's any marketing efforts there to promote that. That's a big, in terms of creating racial equity, economic opportunity, entrepreneurship, I think is vital. I believe the Dairy Queen is owned by an African-American, and I think that's wonderful, and I'm so thrilled that he stays open beyond Labor Day because the previous owner would shut down, and so, that would be a change I'd like to see from city policy. I want to know who these people are and patron their businesses.
Thank you. Same question for Ward 1 candidate Tyler Klein.
Thanks. Yeah, I would, I would think that something that I've noticed while being out on the doors is, I've always had a really positive relationship with city staff through my time at the Senate. They've been pretty receptive to things, and it seems like there might be some disconnects with that, with the community. I've heard some thoughts that, you know, things might not be as, you know, as an open place to go for questions or services, and I just, I think that we need to find a way that all people in the community are able to access, you know, City Hall and different services we have and see what a resource it can be for us.
Thank you. Same question, please, for Ward 2 candidate Jason Greenberg.
Can you repeat the question?
I sure can.
Thank you.
Which one was it? Oh, yeah. "Please give an example of city programs or services, if any, which you would like to see changed, and what changes would you propose?"
Well, I definitely support having more events for Robinsdale residents. I know we have a lot of programs through Parks and Rec, but I think there should be more opportunities for residents to engage together around, one idea that I had is maybe having a concert series that could be shared between, a summer concert series that could be shared between Sanborn Park and Lakeview Terrace Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Webb, Ward 2 candidate Sheila Webb, please.
That's great. I would love to see programming, and I support a program around mental health. I support having a farmer's market. I also support having diverse programs, supporting programs for children. I think that we need to be diverse when we're looking at families and children and recreation and programs and events. We can't continue to do business the way we've been doing business and excluding populations of people from having those supports and programs in place.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Our next voter question asks, "If you would please give examples of how you have been able to work productively with those who might not share your opinions?" And we will start with Ward 2 candidate Sheila Webb, please.
As a school social worker and working with a team of teachers and other staff, we don't all share the same opinions, thoughts, and sometimes not even values, but what we do have in common is the mission of doing what's in the best interest of children. So, I think whenever you stay focused on the mission and the values of why you're working, you can always learn from each other, and you support the mission, you support the goal, you support what you're working for, and it's not about the individual, it's not even always about your value or what you believe in. Sometimes it's just about focusing what's in the best interest of what you're doing. And so, I think if you keep that in mind, you can move forward and work with a team of people that you might not always agree with, but definitely can work with.
Thank you. Ward 2 candidate Jason Greenberg, please.
Thanks. Yeah, I would say on the Planning Commission, there are diverse views on the Commission itself, plus the views that we hear from the community. So, not everyone always agrees with every decision that's being made. Sometimes it's on a variance request or conditional use around someone's property, and there are neighbors that disagree, and so, it's really about finding what's best and makes the most sense for Robinsdale, and in that way, being able to listen to the differing viewpoints and understand the differing viewpoints, respect what everybody has to say and where they're coming from. viewpoints, respect what everybody has to say and where they're coming from. But again, finding the result that, in my opinion, or in the, the opinion of the, the Planning Commission, is what's best for Robinsdale.
Thank you. Ward One candidate Tyler Klein, please.
Sure. You know, I, for my job, I mean, day-to-day, I meet with people in the community that come down to the Capitol and want to, you know, advocate for whatever issue they have. And, you know, we don't always agree on everything, but they may have good ideas that, you know, we can, you know, come together on. There was a, a community event that we had where a former elected official was at it, and he talked about how when he was in office, there used to be more room for compromise. And it seems that in today's growing divide of partisan politics, that you, people are just stuck with their needs, that I'm right and you're wrong. And I think we just have to recognize that there's room for being right on both sides of any issue, and we can kind of grow those together and make our town a better place.
Thank you. And Ward One candidate Charles Ostensen, please.
Thank you. I think the key is to not focus on winning, and the key is to focus on what can, what can, how can we both benefit? I'm a business attorney, so I'm dealing with contracts and negotiations over buying companies and negotiations all the time. And it's, it's not about getting, you know, your way all the time. It's about recognizing where your, your points are weak, where your strengths are. I'm really, I'm also on the city's charter commission and, which is normally a very mundane commission. But recently, there's been some, some disagreements on a few things. And again, the key is to not try to win your, to hammer your point home and win. It's to say, okay, what are you trying to do? Is there a way you can accommodate me? These are my issues, and communicate with people. And that's the key, just to not go in with a us-versus-them attitude, but to go in not, you know, get rid of the ideology, get rid of the partisanship, and just go in and say, let's get it done.
Thank you. You know, I think we can sneak in one more question before our closing statements. Let's see. What do you think is unique about Robinsdale compared with its surrounding communities? How do you plan to stay connected to residents and get their feedback? And we will start with Ward Two candidate Jason Greenberg, please.
So actually, I mentioned in my opening statement that Robinsdale, the unique thing about Robinsdale is that the community is, is so well-connected. So neighbors know one another, neighbors take care of one another. And I think that that is such an important piece of what I want to do around being on the city council, is to broaden those networks and make our community more connected. And so it's really just about the fact that we have this amazing community that we can support, we have this unique downtown and all of our independent businesses. And so at the end of the day, that's my number one priority, is to make sure that I stay connected to constituents, constituents, to listen to what they have to say, to make sure that it's a conversation, and represent their voice on city council for Ward Two.
Thank you. Ward Two candidate Sheila Webb, please.
I think what's unique about Robinsdale is where we're centrally located. There's the Parkway nearby, there's Minneapolis close to us. There's so much diversity around us, not to mention, Robinsdale is a small town that's developing in its own right. We have a beautiful downtown, we have beautiful lakes, and still some, some, some work to be done around some infrastructure and things like that. But I think that in general, it's a small town that is progressing. And so I think that's the uniqueness. And we have so much diversity that we haven't even tapped into.
Thank you. Ward One candidate Charles Ostensen, please.
Thank you. What's unique about Robinsdale is it's a suburb of Minneapolis, but it's really not. It's a town. It was a town first, and has been surrounded by development that has a typical suburban feel to it. Robinsdale is a small town and still has that small-town feel, and that's what's great about it. And that needs to be preserved, because that's, I think, the reason why people moved to Robinsdale, certainly why I remain in Robinsdale, is I can walk to things that I need. I can go to the, I can walk to a restaurant. I don't have to get in my car and go to the northwest section of the city where all the commerce is. And so that needs to be preserved, and I think that's what's, what's wonderful about Robinsdale.
Thank you. And Ward One candidate Tyler Klein, please.
Sure. You know, I think that some of the other candidates touched on this, but it's, we are in the heart of the metro in Robinsdale, but we have maintained a small-town, kind of caring-about-each-other vibe that's wonderful. I tell the story a lot. My neighbor, as it turns out, lived right next door to me in an apartment in St. Louis Park about eight years ago. We lived next to each other for a year and a half and never met each other once. Now I mow his lawn in the summer, and he, it just snow blows my driveway in the winter. We play softball together. I, I think that that approachable aspect of our community is something that is wonderful, and I hope we can keep that in the future.
Thank you very much. Now I would ask each of the candidates to give us a one-minute closing statement, and we will start with Ward One candidate Tyler Klein, please.
Great. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Robinsdale Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum, as well as Jackie Wells for moderating. I think often to a teacher and a baseball coach I had in high school, Dave Pritchinsky, if you're watching. When we'd play games on the road, he would always say, "Let's leave this field in better condition than when we came." And that's something that I've thought about a lot in other aspects of life, and it's just kind of stuck with me. You know, I think that's why I chose to work at the state senate and why I want to be on the city council. I just, I want to leave this community better than when I, when I got here. No matter if you decide to vote early, in person, via mail, or on Election Day, I, Tyler Klein, ask for your vote. For more information about my campaign, please visit facebook.com/electTylerKlein. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ward One candidate Charles Ostensen, please.
Thank you. And again, thank you to CCX Media for hosting this and the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. As I stated, as I stated in the outset, I'm a longtime resident of Robinsdale, was born and raised here. I learned to ride a bike in this town. I got, I had my first date in this town. I had my first job in this town, and it's a great town. I'm running for city council because I believe that I have the experience and connection to the city and knowledge of the city to really make a difference. And I've outlined some things that I think are truly nonpartisan, non-ideological, and everyone should be on board with. And that's, that's why I'm running. So if, if you're interested in that kind of a candidacy, I would encourage you to check me out. You can find more information about me at charlieforwardone, that's the number four and the number one, dot com, charlieforwardone.com. I'm proud to call Robinsdale my home, and I'd be honored to serve the residents of Ward One. I thank you for your interest, and come November, vote Charlie.
Thank you very much. Ward Two candidate Sheila Webb, please.
Again, this is Sheila Webb. I know that you have many voting options, but I would like to be your choice come November 3rd or whenever you choose to vote. I am looking to push the voices of the people. I believe that our community needs to be well-informed, and we need to be more proactive. Community engagement is everything, and I support that 100%. Vote Sheila Webb, November 3rd or during early voting. You can contact me, webforwardtwo.com. Again, Sheila Webb. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ward Two candidate Jason Greenberg, please.
Thanks again to CCX and the League, League of Women Voters. I've mentioned all the conversations that I've had as a candidate and on the Planning Commission. I've heard about positive changes over the last 10 years. I've heard about our vibrant downtown district. People also say that too many cars are speeding in our neighborhoods. I've heard concerns that crime is increasing. There are positive views on police interactions, but also people that feel they've been profiled. I've talked to people across the entire spectrum, different points of view from different experiences. This election isn't about me, it's about our town. I'm running for city council because I care about Robinsdale. I care about our city, and I care what you think. Please contact me at 612-567-3905, or jasonforbirgtown.org, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the candidates for Robinsdale City Council Ward One, Charles Ostensen and Tyler Klein, and for Robinsdale City Council Ward Two, Jason Greenberg and Sheila Webb. We greatly appreciate your participation in this League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. Kathy?
Thank you to our moderator, Jackie Wells, to the Robinsdale Chamber of Commerce for partnering with the League of Women Voters, Crystal, New Hope, East Plymouth, Robinsdale, to conduct this event, and to CCX Media for presenting the candidate forum today. This forum will be available on Channel 799 for viewing on Friday, October 2nd at 1:00 PM, Sunday, October 4th at 7:00 AM, Tuesday, October 6th at 1:00 PM, and on CCX Media's website for online viewing. Again, the election will be held on Tuesday, November 3rd from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And as you know, early voting has begun September 18th, and we will encourage all in voters to consider voting by mail for convenience and health concerns. However, be sure to send in your completed ballot as soon as you fill it out, or drop it off at your City Hall. If you are not a registered voter, you may register in advance of the election at minvotes.org, the Secretary of State's website, through October 13th, or at the polls on November 3rd. To register to vote, you must have been a resident of the state for at least 20 days prior to the election. Have a valid Minnesota driver's license, learner's permit, Minnesota ID card, or receipts for any of these that shows your correct address in the precinct. You may also register at your precinct polling place with a photo ID plus a document showing your name and current address, such as a bill, a bank statement, or rental agreement. If you do not have any of those documents, you may still register if you are accompanied by a registered voter in the precinct who will take an oath that you qualify to vote in that precinct. If a member of our cable TV audience feels an issue has not adequate, been adequately addressed, we urge you to contact the candidates directly. Finally, the League of Women Voters encourages informed and active participation in government, and we work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influence public policy decisions through education and advocacy. Membership to our league is open to men and women of all ages. For more information about the League of Women Voters, visit www.lwvmn.org. I thank you for being with us this afternoon.